Please, everybody, please stand, face the flag.
My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Keller, would you please leave this in your purse?
Everyone would please bow their head. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you watch over the activities of tonight's meeting, that they may be pleasing to you. We pray that you watch over our community, our state, our nation, and our world as we continue, continue to deal with this pandemic and the unknowns. I just pray that you deal with people that are suffering, that you can watch over them and give them peace. In your name we pray.
Okay, I approve all the readings of minutes for November sixteenth meeting, please.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
And second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor of approving these minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, approval of the agenda, any changes or additions to the agenda?
Here's the addition of six A from earlier, please.
The motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Maybe a motion by Keller. Second, and second by Stern. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, six A. Thank you. Five A, engineers' report. Jared, welcome back.
Thank you. Okay, well, again, I don't really have that much. I'll just go through my agenda quick here. But Expedition to States, obviously, we still have quite a mess out there. It'll be something that I'll just leave on the agenda each month here. So we remember, we were promised that we'd have an action plan in the spring, something that's going on, some, depending on pending lawsuits out there. So, no update on that specifically, just that, you know, we're gonna, the, the work is not done. You know, the little patch that we did this year was just to get us through the winter. Okay, um, water system improvements, uh, this has just kind of been lingering on here. We've been just working a little bit on the easements and the survey out there. Had a couple of new abstracts come in and then I had some questions to get answered today on some of the easements that we're trying to acquire up there, the parcel we're trying to acquire. So I think that's all done now. Um, again, I just put the, the funding on there, just to remind everybody. It's a, it's a water tank replacement, sixty percent cost share from the state water commission is what we've been given. That is set, that's in place. The balance of the money is parade dog money, and we're still counting on getting that stuff. Sounds like we might get some news on that. There's still some chance you get a par- portion of that. And then, um, the balance with, we're looking to have a, drinking water state revolving loan for that. Um, the only reason I bring this up is that if things start going in the right direction, we get some good positive results, we'll probably start the design work this winter. Um, still your project, your guys' choice. Bidding things in the wintertime is the time of year to do it. It's probably a one-year project if we bid it in the winter. If we bid it next summer or next fall, it probably won't be done until 2022. So, I don't know if you care or not, if you're anxious to get going, but I just want to point that out, that if we're trying to get that done next year, we've probably got to talk about that this winter. And I'll just bring it up after you know more about parade dogs.
So Monty, the portion of the parade dog that's being distributed right now, the first go run, that's just a part of it?
That's my understanding, yeah.
We don't know what percentage that is?
All right, so, uh, just kind of doing a few things as I come up here, just to be efficient, you know, checking out the well systems, talking about the SCADA system with the, the guys. Um, just little things for now. Um, reminder that we will be doing that insulating those water service lines in the spring. Um, if we do some televising in the spring, I want to be involved in that and help pinpoint a few problem areas that, that we've kind of marked down over the years. Um, generally, that's it. Um, anybody have anything for me?
The only thing here, I've been, I mean, probably have worked with Dave and Monty, but we need to get some, that manhole and area televised at my piece loser that we thought we had camera footage on.
I visited with Ken Link on that, and he said if it's early spring, because Ryan was looking at several areas around town, and bringing pace in if necessary, so that if it was early enough in spring, it would work out.
Okay. Was like why, just before they pay a little rate?
They want to do some work to that, that area, yeah.
That manhole that they want to lower and stuff, they wanted to see if they needed to do more work while they've got the concrete done.
Yep.
That would be the time.
Didn't they offer up to the same, hey, we're gonna have that out, that would be a great time if something was wrong.
Yeah, yeah. And when we have somebody come to town to do televising, we want them to do everything. Like, you pay just as much in mobilization for those guys as you do for televising. They can, they're, they're not expensive to televise. So, well, that's good. We, I want to get Fifth Street televised if we can, where we have that old pipe, but there's really no, okay, so you like, there's, there's pots of money out there for different things. You guys qualify for that state water commission money, sixty percent grant for water. You don't qualify for anything for sewer. But just in the proposals that are going out there, legislature meets this winter, they're talking about a new thing that cities could qual- qualify for sewer. I don't know what'll happen, but I think they were talking about thirty million dollars for cities to be set aside for sewer projects. So, there could potentially be some grant money out there, starting next year. We'll just keep our eyes open. I mean, I know you've got some old pipes in town, but it's not a, it's not a huge need that I know of right now. So, I'll stick around for a while. If anybody needs anything.
Any other questions for Jared? All right, I see Dave has a nice, uh, more engineering mask on there.
That's more than I've got.
All right, thank you. Let's move down to six A. Um, citizens, request of citizens, uh, COVID regulations, restrictions, mandates. And I just had a DuKart on here.
That's neat.
So come on up or introduce yourself and you're up.
Okay, I'm Tara DuKart. My husband is Joshua DuKart, and we ranch southeast of Hazen, seven miles. And, um, this is my friend Angela, and her, uh, you can introduce yourself too, yes, too. Um, Angela Meyer, we, we all went there. So, we were at, um, we're both chamber members, and so we were at the last chamber meeting, and some discussion came up, and, um, some people there recommended that we come check out this meeting, just to have some discussion. Uh, I, I'm new to, to this, so I, I'm not really sure how everything works. Um, but we know that there was, obviously, a, a lockdown that affected businesses statewide, nationwide, last winter. And I guess just to prepare ourselves from an economic standpoint, a small business standpoint, a local business standpoint, we, I, I'm wondering, if you want to add anything. We're just wondering how we, how we navigate moving forward legally. I, there's just some confusion, I think, on my end, like legally, what, when the governor makes mandates that affect small businesses, when they can be open, what kind of restrictions they may have, when they need to close, those kinds of things. I'm just wondering how the city of Hazen will be navigating that. Is it, is it, is it a mandate? Is it a law? Are there repercussions? What kind of protections do we have? Because ultimately, just to be clear, our, my goal, and our goal, just as a small business owner, I will say that I'm, my husband and I are self-employed, homeschool our kids. Um, so a lot of these regulations and restrictions don't affect us personally, um, except for the fact that a lot of our business also has to do with traveling and, and some of those are restricted for us. It does impact us, um, but we, it's not like we look for cooperation or anything that necessarily mandates it. But just, I, I have a heart for this community. We moved here four years ago, and I, I, I have never put roots down. I grew up in North Dakota. I never wanted to stay here. I never loved it. But since we moved to the Hazen community, I have absolutely loved it. And our friends are business owners, um, and, and their families like us, they're raising kids, and it would absolutely break my heart to see some potential devastating effects to my friends who are trying to run small businesses and, and, and just make ends meet. So, I guess that's just discussion. I have some questions. Are there, what kind of protocols are we following? What are the legal implications?
Well, first of all, Tara, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Angela, thank you for being here. If, if you've read, uh, the Hazen Star and followed what city council meetings and all, or watched our meetings online, which, uh, they're always, they're always available, this board loves this community too.
Mm-hmm.
And we're quite invested in our community. And the last thing we want, and we've never wanted a business to close, um, we've never asked a business to close. We do not go above and beyond what the state recommends or the federal people recommend. Pat Donovan's our attorney. Um, we don't, you know, we're advised by Pat, and, you know, he's our counsel. So, um, I'm not sure what you're, um, asking us, um, because whatever you see that comes out from the states is what we're, you know, we're not putting laws on top of any of the, governors wording. And so I, we're not closing businesses. So I'm not sure what you're asking us. Um, Pat, you know, Pat, if you can answer any of her questions, um...
Well, I can add two, I suppose. The city by ordinance has abdicated a city health officer, which happens to be, at this time, self-proclaimed, it's the Custer District Health District. They can implement any kind of health regulations over and above what the city commission decides to do. They have not taken any action. The city commission has done just what Gary said they have done. The state requirements, which require masks in public buildings, which I see is not being followed, but that is a state mandate, it's not a local mandate. So it is still a mandate. Um, apparently, it has some criminal implications according to the, what I've seen on, and the certain sheriff departments have decided to do or not do about enforcing that mandate. But other than that, the city is open for business.
I think, for clarification, you know, earlier, th- this past winter, you know, back in March, when, you know, salons had to be closed, that's what I'm referring to. Salons had to be closed, uh, movie theaters needed to be closed, restaurants needed to be closed. Bars, um, just wondering if that is, and schools, if that happens, if that happens again this winter, again, for clarification, I didn't think that you, you know, specifically were closing down any businesses. But as you can imagine, it puts a lot of, a lot of stress on the businesses, stress on families with the schools, I mean, it's stress on employers. Um, I, I know friends of ours who own businesses here in town, they've struggled to hire help, and then on top of that, they're supposed to be pushing for mandates that they don't necessarily understand or agree with. So I think it's just, I understand that it's unprecedented. Um, I guess part of my question too is, I mean, how much power do we give our governor and where does this end with restrictions and mandates?
Well, as, as Jerry mentioned earlier, what, what we've been doing as a city government here is we've been abiding by the, the state mandates, the state recommendations, and then, uh, as it relates to the health type things, we've been relying on statements being made then by Custer Health. So we haven't, at this particular point, as a, as a city council, um, other than, um, just making a, a general statement maybe at the meeting that we support the, the mandates and the directives that are coming down from the state level. So to answer the question maybe, it, it sounds like you're, you're asking the question, if we were to get into a situation once again, where, where the governor and the state says, or, or maybe even the, the, the national government says, uh, that we are going to shut down particular types of businesses to try to, um, slow the, the continued progress of this pandemic and stuff like that, I would, I would suspect that we as a city government here would probably act in the same way that we did, uh, the last time that we went through that little adventure. Uh, nobody, particularly us, wants to see small businesses of any sorts in, in the town of Hazen, uh, being shut down and, and, causing them, you know, financial harm and stuff like that, because they're the livelihood of our city, and they, they are what attract people to, to this community to live and become, then viable taxpayers and supporters of, of everything good that we have in this town. But, you know, it being a health type thing, and we're, none of us are, are asking doctors, we have to rely on the direction that's, that's passed on down to us. So right now, we haven't gone to the point where we've taken anything further than what's been handed down to us from the state level.
Is there any discussion, um, about where this ends? I mean, when the mask mandate ends? Is it, is it when the, the virus is gone? Is it when? My, my biggest concern, and I, I don't honestly trick answers, but just to present it, I don't know when this is going to end. And, and so if this is, if this is, I know that the term has been used new normal, new normal, at what cost to public health to wear masks? At what cost to our kids to wear masks? A very good friend of mine owns, um, the children's therapy center in Bismarck. She is a, a, she's recognized around the United States and throughout the world for one, being one of the leading experts in child trauma. In Bismarck, North Dakota, granted, they will see kids from outside of the area. They normally see one suicide concern with a child coming in, attempting, having attempts or talking about suicide. It's typical for them to see one child per month. Right now, since the pandemic started, they're seeing an average of three children per week. And that's just kids. I, I am a teacher, and so I, I have a, a heart and a passion for that. So, how long are we gonna mask our kids? How long are we going to, how long are we going to do this? Because if it's, if it's until the virus is gone, the virus, I don't think is going away. And I know some people are waiting for the vaccine, um, but they've come out and said that the vaccine will only minimize symptoms, it won't prevent the illness, and of course, it comes with tremendous amounts of risks, and the manufacturing companies are not liable. So I don't think the vaccine is going to be the right fit for everybody, and I don't think it's going to solve the problem, which I understand is a whole other issue. But if, when do the masks come off? When do we let kids be kids? When do we become the community that we have been in, in years past?
I think you bring up a lot of good questions, a lot of good concerns, um, probably none of which, uh, has, has gone past any of us as individuals. Um, but as a, as a city government, uh, we clearly don't have the answers to that. We, we, I believe, we, at least right now, we've, we've been relying on the state's directive. Um, we, we have to believe that outside of our small group here, there are people that are, that are out there, that are subject matter experts, that are being relied upon for making some of these decisions. I don't believe it's just the governor up at, up at the Capitol that's, that's coming up with all of these mandates on his own. So, so we just have to take the advisement and, you know, the answer is, we don't know the answer, you know, and, and we hope it, it does, that, that we don't have to necessarily settle for a new normal, that maybe we can get back to, you know, what, what we were appreciating in life before all of this stuff started. But that's an unknown that we, we just don't have an answer for.
Thank you, May Austin. I'll just point out, just, um, since I'm here, and just listening, I decided that I was coming to be an observer. I wanted to listen, I wanted to see all of this. I could not recognize this people when I'm on the street. I've been in, uh, we, our business has been working in Hazen, um, since two thousand and fourteen, and we became Hazen citizens in April of two thousand and nineteen, and then that's when we moved our business here. And I think that we were really well received, and people were really excited that we came. Um, but I can tell you that, um, I was, uh, busy getting a business going and, um, never presented myself to see who are our elected officials or who was running our, um, city. And now I'm sitting here looking at each and every one of you, and I can tell you I'm not recognizing you on the street because you have a mask on your face. Okay, you can see the people I have now, and you probably will recognize me on the street because you can't see my face. Um, I can't, thank you.
Good luck remembering.
But I can't, I can't tell you how much, um, you know, and I don't think that anyone of you would feel any differently. Um, uh, um, there is a great deal of, um, evidence-based studies on both sides of this, actually, on one side of this issue, and the other side is very, very new, as far as whether it's safer not to continue to wear a mask on your face, for many reasons, whether it's breaking down psychological, social interaction, which is one of them. Um, but the health part, and I'm just going to point to someone, which all on the spot, you guys are all, are elected officials. This gentleman here that I don't recognize, as he was giving you his, um, report, he touched his mask three times, pulled it off of his face, oh, repeatedly. Germs are most settled on our hands, okay, and that's, I mean, nobody needs to be told that anymore, right? He, without realizing it, he's grabbing his face and his mask on his face. His mask is not preventing anything from going through the pores, in or out, none of them, okay? Um, I am a nurse, so, um, people that have a problem with, uh, not representing the healthcare side of this or whatever, I am representing the healthcare side of this, touching your face is the number one way to combat any germs. Okay, we are doing this all the time, people are doing this. And respiratory, I would do it too. No, no, I'm trying to point something out. Respiratory system, in nose and mouth, okay, this is your full respiratory system, you have your, your mask below your nose, so you're no more compliant than I am at this moment, um, you either. And so is the gentleman that was speaking. Now, I'm not saying he wears a mask on my face, because as a citizen and my own health, I know what the right thing for my health is, just like you know what the right thing for your health is. You guys feel this much protection is necessary, this much protection is necessary for Mr. Oner, different levels of protection is necessary, because you're demonstrating that to me right now as our elected officials, okay? This is not an attack. I want to be on the same team. What I'm trying to show is everybody has a personal choice, and our governor is taking that away. And according to our constitution and the Bill of Amendment, we don't have a governor that is a dictator. We have a governor that is a governor, that appoints other people to positions, and we have a legislature. And if the legislature comes in in January with all the evidence that they've been given from the medical professionals and from people that they represent us, that we have said, we agree, we want this protection for some reason in our government, and they make a law, and I think our council should be able to attest to that, then it's a law, then it is a law. And it's whether we like it or not, it's a law. And I may not agree with the law, that I have to drive sixty miles an hour between Manhattan and Bismarck, but that's the law, and I'll follow that law, okay? In the meantime, everybody, I think, needs to do a little internal reflection, that we all are approaching these things in our own comfort level. And nobody is really approaching it to the degree that we think we are. As a small business, I am very concerned about Hazen, because it's a domino effect. Legendary, I, I could open the books to you. Legendary never had a better year than two thousand and twenty, okay? We, we have mo- done so much work, that we don't even know how we're handling the work with a small company that we are. And thank you to Hazen and Hula, okay? So we're very, very appreciative of the community. We're appreciative, we want to be here for a really long time. But you know what? We're not going to be here for a really long time. If all of our businesses collapse, and they cannot keep open, because those are, those are the citizens, people will move away. You know, if the industry out here gets shut down, that supports our community, the community will become ghost towns like everything else that has happened in the past, and we have history to show that. So, I guess Tara, um, and I, um, as small businesses, not understanding local government that much, just wanting to be a part of the community, wanting to show concern for our community, and make sure that we're following the laws that are granted by the constitution, and not falling for, not falling for misconceptions that are just being mandated or stated that there's a purpose. Think about it, think about it, as a city council. I ask you, you have a lot on your plate, you know, you have your own personal lives, you have your jobs to answer to, there's so much politics involved almost in anything anymore. But think about it, and understand that you are taking care of this community, like our governor and legislature are supposed to take care of the state, like the federal government is supposed to take care of the United States. And I feel like sometimes we lose track of what we're really doing in the communities. So, that's why we were here. And in no way was anything I was saying was to say you're doing something wrong, I'm just showing you that everybody has a different level of what they're accepting of this mandate. And to be educated, educate yourself as much as possible.
I appreciate you guys being here and, and speaking your opinion. That's fantastic. I wish more people would, because a lot of people just take, take for granted for, you know, the thing, we just do what we, you know, our own, pick up our own rules or, so, and, and don't ask, and don't express themselves. So, thank you so much for, for doing that. We appreciate it.
Thank you for being good listeners.
Well, that's what we do. So, you know, I, I'm glad Legendary is here, and I'm glad you guys are doing great. Tara, you and Josh, welcome back.
Thanks.
You guys do a great job, nothing. Um, so, we want more of that. We want more people move back home. Um, you know, a lot of things are out of our control. Um, I, I will never, sitting in this chair, you know, have a mandate come down to us from the state or the federal government and says, no, we're going to go against that. We're gonna, we're not doing what we're being asked to do. Um, I won't do that. Um, but, you know, that's, that's the way, the way it is, I guess. So, um, it's one of those deals where we, none of us know for sure, one way or the other, what's happening, how long it's going to last, where it's going to go, what's the new norm, what's the old, you know, what's, we just have to do the best we can with what we're provided. And you're right, educate ourselves as much as possible.
I think a, a big thing is, and I'm realizing this myself, is what's constitutional and, and what's an overreach of power. And just understanding, for myself, I'm educating myself right now, because I think a lot of things depend on it, what, what mandates are actually constitutional and what mandates, I think, our government overreach. And, and honestly, will have a negative impact, a lot, some, some intended consequences, I think, and stuff, and some unintended consequences of this. So, thank you again. I, yeah, thank you for being willing to listen and, and hear our concerns.
Any other questions or thoughts? And that's all we have, Pat. We're not law people. Pat's our counsel. So, you know, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, we're going to move on to number seven, seven A, for our second reading of the ordinance, uh, one point zero, one zero two, state limit boundary description. You don't have to copy that.
Just goes back to the description developed by Mr. Link after our annexations. Uh, no changes were recommended at the last meeting. So I guess at this point, if you want to move to approve and adopt this, we will change the city boundary. So I guess at this point, if you want to move to approve and adopt this, we will change the city boundary.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Wolf.
Second.
And second by Hack, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenor.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. 7B, it's our first reading of the fee amendments ordinance and our resolution.
Okay, I haven't drafted the actual ordinance, as I told you in the notes from Pat. He did give me some guidance as far as drafting that so that we can effectively change all of them in one resolution or document. These are still proposed changes. You can see Pat has marked which ones would be changed by ordinance so that we get that all written upright and then we can approve the other changes by either resolution or motion. So I guess at this point, are there any other changes recommended for these fees? Otherwise, if you want to do a motion to move forward with the first reading of these tonight and then we'll incorporate them into the proper documentation for the second read along with any changes that you recommend.
I'm prepared to do that, I know we've had these listed here for several months now in question and for discussion. I don't think there's a lot more changes that are being proposed.
Probably looking at doing Casey's recommendation after, if we pass this. Slowly increase a certain percentage. I like that idea personally, once we get this in motion.
So what we would have to do on the first reading here is if we approve to go forward with the first reading based on the green column there, which is the proposed, then we could come back to the next meeting if there were particular, if we wanted to do it in steps or whatever, then we would invoke that as part of the discussion presumably. Or would we have to tap, say, if we're going to do this in steps, make the, whatever we consider the first step to be, that in which we would approve it at the second reading? Or can we, or can we say that we want to move toward that particular dollar amount in that column, but we want to do it in increments of X?
If you're asking for my opinion, the, what I would suggest is for the ordinance itself, which requires two readings, it would have to be pretty specific in its drafting. And I would recommend that that be made effective after, say, the first billing cycle of those ordinances, so, I mean, those fees so affected in January. The resolution is a one-step deal. Once you adopt the resolution, the fee is changed. The statutory requirements, I don't think there's been any conflict that has been located so far, so that's not an issue.
I think what Jason was asking is that in previous discussions, Casey had raised that maybe we don't want to go right to the finish line here immediately. We want to maybe gradually get to the point where we get to the particular fees that are right now in the proposed column. And so I wanted to just understand the process here. If we wanted to do it in, I'll call it baby steps, then each one of those steps would be a new resolution?
No.
Okay.
The ordinance is the only two-step matter.
Okay.
Once you adopt the resolution, it's adopted. So for those, you should be satisfied that the proposed fees are what you want to accept.
Okay.
Then make a resolution and you can include all of the changes in one resolution.
Right.
And then adopt those particular ones. So your discussion should be about what amount those fees should be to be adopted by resolution. The ordinance changes that require the two readings, you'll have time to amend between the first reading and the second reading of the ordinance. But you should at least begin with a specific ordinance change that includes the proposed fees and states a time period when they will become effective.
Okay.
Well, it was my understanding that the only one we were talking about doing that with was the water. We weren't doing it on all of them, right Casey? We were basically talking about the water starting at the $12 and then doing a percentage increase every year after that to keep up. That was my understanding.
Well, I mean, I'd like to do, I'd like to do, I mean, across the board, like a flat, I guess, raise it, I guess, raise it, I guess, 10% or 20%, you know, and then, and then every year, you know, go, I guess, 2% or 3%.
Kind of like making a cost of living adjustment.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, as he says, it's probably going to be impossible to do. But the other thing is, I don't want to see my fee being $3.39. Make it $3.50 and be done, okay? Don't make my fee $43.02. Because you're going to get to those points where it's going to be 2 cents, 17 cents. To me, that's just redundant. The water fee I agree on, because that does go up. Our fees for a lot of liquor on sale, that is really nothing for us to, other than put money in our general fund, why would it go up 10% every year? That doesn't make sense to me. And then have it at $103.33 or something, you know?
Well, where it maybe makes sense is the fact that we know that there are going to be particular funds that have come to the city in the past that will no longer be available to us. We have certain things that we do as a city that are, we're going to continue to do. And they're going to go up in cost. And so I think what Casey was alluding to is that everything's going to cost more year after year. So to try to prevent raising additional taxes and stuff, we could go ahead, we could increase these fees and these in part would help then subsidize the other increases in cost to the city.
Yes, yes, and then too, I guess, you know, in 10 years, I guess, in 10 years, I guess, I guess, you know, I guess, we won't have to, I guess, like, mute. Mute about this anymore, you know, I mean, everything will just.
Stay in line.
Go up over time, yeah.
And we won't be having conversations saying, holy God, we're the only city that, or this city of Hazen, we're like 25% less than all these other cities because we haven't addressed this over time yet.
But then you're also going to be locked into your 2% raise and your item went up 12% and you're stuck in 2% unless you talk about it again.
Well, you know, it's, I mean, it's, yeah. You know, it's.
We haven't raised the fees in how many years, 10 years?
But we're finding also when we compare to other cities and stuff like that, we're extremely low in a lot of those categories.
In some areas, but not in all, in some. My understanding was it was just the water fee.
That has to be dealt with to hit start expenses too, so, I mean, we're not just raising fees for the sake of raising fees.
Right.
Yeah, that.
Well, and you can't, you're kind of like a legislative body. You can't adopt something that's going to bind everybody in the future because you make a decision today. You have to allow those people to, who are newly elected and declassified, to make their own decisions. There are going to be times when technology, like for street lighting, for example, it's already changed where you can get solar streetlights and you may not need a electrical bill of whatever you are now charging per month because you may replace those lights. There are probably going to be other changes in that just due to technology, so. I think you should just deal with today, let the future, deal with those issues as they come up. And adjust prices that are fair to the citizens pay at that time and not just make a mandatory tonight, but.
We just put it on our city planner's calendar that every couple of years, maybe this becomes a topic for discussion on the docket for whoever the governing body is at that particular time so that we don't find ourselves not dealing with it and then, and then all of a sudden we find that we're way behind the eight ball. I'd be fine with that. That should be as part of any good budgeting, so you look at all your fees and so.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a part of the budget, it's going to be a good idea. We look at it and it'll be good anyway.
My feeling that tonight should not be the first reading. I think our next, unless, I don't think we're gelled here on this, so, unless, unless you guys feel like we're ready to go, I want to make sure we're solid and we're, you know, we've got the style of way to want to do it, so. I was feeling similarly, Nancy was, I thought it was the water that would graduate.
Realistically, the only, there's only five items that are changed by ordinance on there.
Right, the first, the first four, right?
Well, no, because that actually.
No.
From our part, pulled up, it's just a water base fee.
Okay, I see.
And then the curb stop, it would be new, and the reconnect fee. And then the pet licensing and the tree trimming are the only other, only other ones set by ordinance. So it would just be those five that would be included in the reading of an ordinance change or amendment. Everything else is just done by motion or resolution.
Okay, yeah. You know, I guess, two, you know, like right now, I mean, on the, on the water usage fee, you know, I guess, you know, I guess, you know, I guess, we charge, you know, it's what, what I guess we pay plus a percentage, you know, I guess on top of that, you know, I mean, that'll change every year too, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's not, I guess, some years, it's changed a couple times during the year.
Actually, no, we indexed our water usage a dollar fifty over what we're charged by Southwest.
No, I'm saying that Southwest sometimes has come up more often this last year.
They only, they can only change that only for that to go to the legislature, the state water commission to get approved later, right? And yes, we did index that, not saying that another board five years down the road could say, well, that's, that's not right. We should be less or more or whatever. So then they would have to change that ordinance again. So by doing a first reading tonight, we're only doing those five that you just mentioned. Just those five, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, let me suggest, if you're going to consider the first reading, you should at least include an effective fee. And if it's going to be the first billing cycle, I don't, I don't like the idea of just saying January 1 because you don't have a.
Right.
Well, some of them would be January 1, I mean, as far as.
Yeah, if that's the first billing cycle, then.
Well, the pet licenses are due January 1.
Right.
You're supposed to re-license. We've never had the curb stop fees, so where do you start? Because it is not a regular billing, it's only when it's requested, so January 1 would work for that.
How about the water base fee?
That one would be a perfect one for the billing with the January billing.
For cycle.
Goes effective with the January 20 billing, yeah. And the tree trimming is an annual, so that would be January 1. So four of the five, we could stipulate as effective January 1st and then the water portion of that, we can make that effective with the billing, the January billing. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, does anyone want to take a stab at it then?
The motion that we approved, the first reading for the five ordinances mentioned here, with the water ordinance being effective with the January billing and the remaining four ordinances effective January 1st, 2021.
Okay, motion by Taylor. Second, and second by Stern, discussion. Good with that? Roll call.
Taylor, aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf. Aye.
Omenor.
Aye, motion carried.
Yes, we'll see the second reading at the next meeting then. All right, now the 9A, water sewer report.
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, and street cemetery.
I do have nothing to report at this time, but I have a request, citizen gravel loads are trying to get them washed again. And Dave's on vacation, but he was going to, he and I left to the crew.
Elbow lift?
Yep, yep. And it's more so right at the bottom, bottom corner. It's just something that we're going to have to, you know, be vigilant on, which I think we have, but it's just, you know, maybe a little bit sooner or more frequent, so. Or a rain would help, yeah, to help relook that. Other than that, I don't, you know, Rusty, you have something else?
No, I have to go, they either work that, today or they're going to do that tomorrow.
Right.
I talked to him this morning. Everybody struggled at Fargo for one or two work that came back and was working fine. No major issues, mainly just some hydraulic adjustments and a couple old rings.
Everything's ready for winter. Not kind of like we're fucking some part, but other than that, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Police, fire, forestry.
Did you forget anything?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I didn't mean to.
I do, so.
Thank you.
Okay, it was brought to my attention that with our police department, Jim Wolfe has not taken any vacation this year. And he, because of staffing, and so he has a little bit of vacation that I'm requesting we either pay out or allow him to carry over.
Under our policy, you can carry over $160. His current balance is like $256.
$160, you say?
Yes.
$650.
Well, they have some circumstances that are unusual for that to happen, so obviously, even though it's $160, I think we should have, change that if we need to, but Monty, what are your thoughts?
No, that's perfectly fine, whatever you want to do, he's comfortable with as well. It's just going to be, you know, difficult if you add now another year's accrual of vacation on there. He's going to have a couple of months off. Yeah. So I know we, we were given an opportunity in the company that Casey and I work for where they basically extended, normally what you have to have is down at your anniversary date. And I'm assuming that's what the city is, down to your anniversary date, down to that $160 or? Ours is actually calendar year. Calendar year, okay. So in our world, if it's not down to that level, you, it's a use it or lose it type thing. But we were given an additional year because of this mess to get back down to that particular level. I guess it begs the question, in your conversations with Jim, I don't know if that hurt, is it realistic in his mind that he's going to be able to use in addition to his accrual an additional 96 hours of vacation time?
I did not talk to Jim about his preference or if he's able to do it because of staffing. Um, and you can't, you won't know, because we have one out now that had surgery with more, um, physical therapy that he needs, so, you know, what's gonna happen next year? Who knows?
Do we have the option to pay some out and carry some over?
It's up to you.
I think we could, I mean, we could probably do, unless Pat tells us otherwise, we can do this one anything.
As long as you're following your own personnel policy. And I don't think you're under contract with the employees. And then you may resolve that at some point by going to personal time off instead of having separate vacation time, separate...
I guess, I, I, wherever we go with this discussion tonight, it's, it's obviously somewhat precedent setting as well. So there, you might run into a situation that's weird and wonky in the, in the future, and you might have all of your employees in a situation where
Yeah, true.
You know, so, so we have to be somewhat cognizant of that. Yet, I, you know, this year is not something that anybody asked for, so we need to be fair, but we have to be also fair to, you know, to the city as well in terms of cost on that.
Monty, would you visit with Jim tomorrow?
No, we can bring it up again next year.
Okay, all right. Let's do that.
Okay, and then I also have Corey Beery, our fire chief, called, and we are coming to the end of the year, and I'm not exactly sure when that payment is due on that fire truck.
I'd say it's March.
Okay, but he is saying that they are not using their entire budget this year, and they would like that budget item or leftover budget money to be used towards that payment. And there is, uh, right now, thirty-six thousand left in his budget, and he said there's really no more bills uh, coming up this year, and the payment will be thirty-eight thousand in March.
That sounds like, in my opinion, would be a great plan.
Well, and that was part of the discussion we had when we wanted to buy it, isn't it? If that were to ever happen, that we could access that, use that, so that's absolutely what the way the plan's supposed to work, so we're lucky that it's happening.
And if that much less flesh people, they would have to sell.
Okay, we don't need a motion or anything on that, too?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I will make that motion too.
Hey, we'll use all of it, or what is your motion?
To use the funds, 'cause we're gonna need them, 'cause they're already thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-six, thirty-five.
Let's do
In case there's something else.
Yeah, so thirty-five thousand.
There's a motion by Wolf. Second, and a second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Omenor.
Aye.
Omenor.
Aye. Motion carried.
Down with you all.
Okay, thank you. Buster, HCD.
I'll take a pass.
Thank you very much. And that takes us down to twelve A, down to new business. Uh, Mercer County has a property that's available, that they tried to get rid of and could not sell, so now they're offering to the city of these. And it is, if you know where Marion Keller lives from, from Senex, the house just to the south side of her. Um, Monty's got the description up there. It is, I think it was a, it's a prime property for us to acquire for a dollar in the county, and
Two dollars?
It's two now.
There's two lots.
Oh, two lots. And to do the same thing we did with the place back here, I'm not saying to burn it down or whatever, but I think it's a great urban renewal project for us to take down a, a property like that. In the backyard, you'll see this image of this garage. It is the three, three garage doors, but there is a fourth space. It could be a fourth stall garage easily. I was inside the garage today. It's, the concrete's in good shape. It's, it's sheeted, it's insulated, it's got electricity, and the ceiling is sheetrock. Uh, it's messy and dirty and needs some TLC with some siding and whatnot, but that, that's alley access right there that you see. It does have concrete from the alley, more of an apron, I guess, so. I, I think this is something that we could, you know, put around and flip ourselves, kind of like with this last property. I don't know the taxes against it. I guess that's the only thing we, I, we need to check on, but...
And then what, what kind of conditions is the house in?
Should be tear torn down.
Torn out.
Torn down, so, you know, our guys could tear it down, but we just have to have a trackhoe to get the basement out and backfill it, and that'd be the way to work out, I think that would need to be done. There are, there are a lot of trees on this property, and there is a chain link fence. I was ready to, we take the chain link fence down as well. Right now, it just collects garbage and weeds.
The only taxes would be special assessments and the jury. I didn't look them up, 'cause the county will cancel the regular real estate taxes, so maybe draft a score on it.
Yeah. So, that's what I think would be a good idea. Dave, go ahead.
It would be tough for us, our street crew, to tear that down without a backhoe or whatever. Front end motor, you're not gonna reach into interior or whatever, and crackle, and they reach in and, and pull them down. I mean, we could probably haul away some of the debris or whatever, but as far as not being a problem, it'd be pretty tough and dangerous for the women to do that.
Okay. Would you check to see the cost of rent, that?
Okay.
Uh, I know, we already know the cost, the, Schwartz did the last one. Or he did the basement, we burned it down, but
So, so are we suggesting that, that our experience of burning down, how this
This garage is a lot, this garage is a lot closer to the house, and I would think that it would be it'd be tough, I think, without having too much damage. And there's a lot of trees around there. We'd have to cut down, put a few trees before we burn it. So, I know the last time we used, was it forty thousand gallons, Dave? Thirty-eight thousand gallons of water. We're burning this one down, so we used to suppress the fire at the beginning of that time. So. Anyhow, uh, we don't have to take action tonight, but I think this would be a something that I think we should take on, and if you guys wanna drive by and take a look at it, put this on the V.
Okay, if you'd like, I can get an estimate from Wade again if you want.
Get estimate from Wade and see what the cost of rent and trackhoe too.
And write it for specials.
Let me just read. I'm assuming that's the same letter that we got in our mailbox, and but it says, please let, let me know when the thirty days of this letter...
I'll, I'll contact the auditor and let it know that it's still being discussed.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
What is, in, in their letter or their offering, I mean, they put the thirty days there, what, what is their action if if we didn't have, if it becomes a county?
They actually own it now.
Got it.
Kind of the, partings.
Yeah, yeah.
Townhouse.
Yeah.
All right. That takes down approval of bills.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. And Monty, anything?
I need a couple sheets on table from this truck that was entered today.
Okay, more discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Omenor.
Aye, motion carried. Me adjourned. Thank you. Thanks again for coming, ladies. Appreciate it.